Period. Thank you. And three, the human trafficking presentation. Shelly, your response to that. If we had more resources, sexual assault centers with us. And all of you.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to have a talk with you about human trafficking and sexual exploitation. Many of you know me as Councilwoman Thompson Soes, but aside from that honorary, I've also had the honour of working in gender-based violence for the last thirty years. So it's from that state that I'm here today as a registered social worker to share a little bit about human trafficking and sexual exploitation with the goal of kind of de-mystifying it a little bit so everyone can understand a little bit more about it. I'll talk a little bit about what it is, what the impacts are, what the risks are, and where services can be found to help support. And I'm happy at the end of the presentation to answer the questions that you might have. So on your table, you have my card, as well as Bailey, who is our Morse navigator for card, should you want to connect to either of us after this presentation. So, human trafficking is kind of a criminal term. It's a term really that involves recruitment, transportation, and harboring of people, often used in force, coercion, fraud, deception, or threats towards person or towards their loved ones. The purposes of exploitation that may involve sexual exploitation and they involve other more domestic exploitation. Really, any kind of trafficking is a human rights violation and it's typically covered in criminal code. It happens both domestically. What I mean domestically is here in Canada. It happens internationally. We often think about it as being a part of organized crime. But in reality, in my experience within Canada, when countries, when that exploitation or trafficking involves orders that are provinces, for example, or counties, there is a very less sort of organized nature to it than the nature that we think of when we look to TV and look at what we kind of see as that image of that. More often, in my experience, it occurs at that local level. And aside from human trafficking as a term, you may have heard a more recent referred-to term called commercial sexual exploitation of children and youth. One of the key things that I think has probably brought me here is your experiences of hearing this talk about in terms of it happening in Nova Scotia, but also happening here in Picto County. In reality, Nova Scotia has been kind of documented as a very large exploitation exporter of people across their borders on the way across the country. So it's something you think about. And Picto County is certainly not immune to being a part of that. Generally speaking, when you think about this sexual exploitation, if you're talking about someone under the age of nineteen, someone under the age of nineteen cannot consent to legally participating in what some people might refer to as sex work, or prostitution, or any form of exploitation. They're not an adult, they're minor, and they're particularly at risk in terms of that form of coercion and manipulation. So, one thing that we need to think about is when you have such experiences, most people experience a lot of trauma in the nature of what has occurred to them and what their experiences are. So from a mental health perspective, we refer to that as complex trauma. And I originally thought I'd really get into that some, but I think I'll skip that potentially for the conversation. But generally speaking, people who are trafficked have often experienced some trauma in their life. And if they haven't experienced it before that experience, it is often an outcome of that experience, that shortens, can relate to and understand. Some of the things that kind of put youth more at risk is, as I've indicated here in Nova Scotia, we have the highest rates in Canada of human trafficking in terms of sexual exploitation. In fact, the RCMP four years ago formed a special unit, and they are now tracking people from Nova Scotia across the country. When they're a desk, for example, out west and have origins in Nova Scotia, they're tracking those numbers to better understand that situation. A lot of the studies show that people who are trafficked are people who are in or have just aged out of foster care. So that's something that we need to think about. And we also know that LGBTQ plus people are at higher rates of trafficking and exploitation as they often face many forms of marginalization, including homelessness. Runaways are three times more likely to be trafficked. And drugs are often a factor. And we often think, when we think about sexual exploitation, we think about things like poverty, gang membership. But the one thing that we don't think about is family and friends who have been involved somehow in that exploitation and how that can also be a factor in terms of getting involved. And, oh, sorry. Flashback. And one of the things that we really need to recognize in terms of sexual exploitation is the extreme differences in rates in terms of people who have been exploited, who are indigenous, for example. Indigenous women make up fifty percent of the Canadian population. However, they give up roughly about fifty percent of the victims of sexual exploitation. So as to African, Canadian immigrants and Asian women, they are overrepresented in the numbers. Some of the things that often are at play are kind of a lower sense of self-esteem, in particular kind of the sense of belonging, the feeling like you don't really fit or belong anywhere. Attention-seeking behavior in terms of seeking that sense of belonging from your peers or intimate partners, or in some cases gangs, which is kind of less, in my lived experience as social worker experience, here in Picto County. And one of the things, I know I've got a presentation done by a mum whose daughter died out west, who had been involved in sexual exploitation and is a direct consequence of that work that she did and was murdered. And in that case, when she talked, she talked about, you know, my daughter went to hockey. She, you know, was on the swim team. She had friends. There weren't any of those risk factors that were actually in play in that situation. And that seems to be the case in a number of situations. So these risk factors are something to keep in mind, but they're not, you know, an absolute kind of chipping box. So I guess when you think as, you know, everyday citizens and as leaders of the community, you know, what can you do to help make a difference here? Providing safe spaces for youths to belong and for youths to be engaged in safe circles of recreation are really important protective things about against many things in life, including exploitation. So some of the tactics that exploiters use, which is often hard to kind of imagine, like, how does this actually play out? And if you can kind of imagine what you know about domestic abuse and violence and how that plays out, you can apply many of those kinds of situations to how it plays out if someone ends up in a situation that is often unimaginable to us. It often starts with social isolation, economic dependence, intimidation, control, doing some manipulation. And that kind of creates then a circle that gets really hard to get out of it. And often, people think like, why would you stay? Why would you be in that situation? And to kind of split that on its edge and think about domestic violence, that's something that you've learned over time that you would never say to a victim of domestic violence, you know, why haven't you left? Why do you find yourself in this situation? So the kind of the preconditions that I share are things that I hope, you know, help you understand that there are a lot of factors at play aside from the person as an individual. So, you know, understanding a little bit more about how that happens. And when we're doing the MORT program, which is mapping a road to power and healing, and we're working with youth aged nine, really enough, but we do a program in the school with thirty-seven girls, we're wanting them to have information, information that's very empowering to help you kind of break down the situations that you might find yourself in. So some sort of common understanding of patterns of recruitment for someone who is trying to exploit that person is things like, you know, let me take you somewhere more exciting, which is something that put places like Picto County, where we're more rural, we have, you know, west, limelight and sparkling things, I guess, going on around us, where a trip to the city or a trip, you know, somewhere everywhere here could seem very exciting and it could be a very dangerous trip that you find yourself going on. Things like, you know, you're so beautiful. You could be a model, let me photograph you, and then all excited into a situation with these lines where it's something that you didn't anticipate that you were going to be in. So kind of the idea of, you know, think, think, and think again as youths in terms of deciphering a situation that you might be, might find yourself in. And in terms of understanding a little bit more about how those techniques and things happen, there's things called grooming, love bombing, sending sexually exploited material, persistence, and kind of what I've often referred to as revenge porn. Or there's also the sort of boyfriend-girlfriend murder. I'll explain a little bit more about what those things actually are. Grooming or love bombing is kind of that developing of a relationship where you're over-exaggerating your attention to someone. You're providing them a lot of gifts, maybe money, a lot of compliments. You're really just focused on showering that person, building them up to be on top of a pedestal and, you know, seeing them as someone very, very special. So if you think about a loss of self-esteem, a loss of sense of one, you can see how somebody telling you all of these wonderful things could be potentially really appealing. Everyone likes to be appreciated, likes compliments, and it can become something that you're not anticipating that it is at the time. There is often, in terms of the idea that people get lured into sexual exploitation by like organized crime or an organized kind of gang. And more often than not, what may occur is a boyfriend or girlfriend kind of poaching you and gaining your trust and encouraging you to consider things that I say all the time as a social worker. And we all have kind of boundaries, lines between us. And the decisions that we make tell us what we're comfortable with and what we're not comfortable with. And the thing about those boundaries is when you kind of step over, you step on it, all of a sudden it's out of view and it becomes a lot easier to slip in a direction that you didn't imagine at the beginning of this. So that happens. The other thing that often happens, which I'm sure that you hear a lot about, people asking for pictures of youths and those same things sent back and forth. And that is actually a crime, under the criminal code. But aside from that, that can often be a way that barriers end up getting broken down in terms of comfortability, receiving a pic of somebody that is nude or being asked for that is often kind of something that can be at play here. And one of the ways that that comes into play then is later, if you received or sent one of these images later, if you're saying no, the idea that this person had it can then become a threat, that they're going to share it with someone or if they're going to embarrass you in some way. So it often keeps rolling in a direction that is not imagined in the beginning. So, like I said, in the very beginning of it, the experience of sexual exploitation is very traumatic. And it often involves people who have had some degree of trauma at the beginning. And as you kind of go on through the experience, that trauma becomes bigger and bigger. And for people who are in a situation where they're being exploited, they often describe kind of not staying in their mind or in their body during that time. As they often describe having faulty kind of sense of themselves and confusion about those relationships that are at play of being a part of the situation in which they're being exploited. You know, I'll save my social work piece that's get through that part. And jump here in terms of the experience of someone who has fallen victim to them. So often, there is a degree of denial, the confusion about the relationship factors that are at play. Someone who is known to them, a family, or a friend, or someone new in their life, someone who's built them way up and all of a sudden is tearing them way down. So that's a very confusing kind of situation. They're often afraid of law enforcement and what might happen if they became involved? What could happen if child protection became involved? Because certainly being exploited is a situation where children are experiencing harm. And so it's a situation that child protection may and often does become involved with. There's fear about what the trafficker or the parent person who is avoiding them could do. And there's also that sense of security or place that they belong in some situations that's kind of referred to as a trauma bond. And, you know, in general, people often in these situations feel overwhelming emotion, which comes out either as, you know, too little, or no emotion, or too much, just kind of a not feeling yourself and not feeling at a place where you're safe and grounded. So you don't know who you can trust. You're not sure that there is hope out there. You're not sure that there's someone who can help you. And people are often carrying a lot of feelings of shame, fear, worthlessness, anger, grief, sadness, anxiety, and, like I mentioned, kind of dissociation, which is like not feeling connected with yourself, if I could put it very generally. So that affects then your thinking. You often have trouble with attention and concentration, memory. There may be thoughts, intrusive thoughts that are coming in. People may involve themselves in self-injury, anywhere from issues with food, to alcohol and drugs, to avoiding or seeking out sexual relations, or in some cases, even that abuse may turn headward. It's very common, or like I said, people to not know who they can trust. And, sorry, just getting a little emotional here. And so I think when you kind of picture that, the thing that we need to keep in mind is that this isn't someone else's problem, it's our problem here in Picto County. And it involves youths and adults who we may know or have known in our lifetime. And we need to think intentionally about treating them with compassion and treating them with care so that they can get to the places that they need to help break down their experience of trauma and get the supports in place. So in terms of kind of what we do at the Women's Centre is from a women-centered perspective, we provide services to girls and to women, and also to men who've experienced sexual violence. And we meet them where they're at. And what I mean by that is we're very centered on individual and that type of experience. So we want to do things like find out what's going on with them, you know, take care of their most immediate pressing needs first. So if they're hungry, get them something to eat and make sure that they have a regular source of food in their life. If they're homeless and they don't have a place to sleep that night, then, you know, right away begin working on solving that problem. And as those immediate kind of safety things are responded to, then working on diving a little bit deeper and making sure that we have collaborative wraparound services. So, you know, recreation, which I know is something that municipalities are invested in and are involved in, is an important part of kind of building in safe spaces for people. It won't act as an intervention, but it's something that can be part of kind of that preventative story in building safe and stable communities. So our approach at the centre is kind of twofold. So we do direct services to offer support to women on a broad range of issues, including human trafficking and sexual exploitation, when we're invited to be a part of that conversation. We also work on social change by doing presentations like this and helping be a part of building safer spaces. And we really believe that there's a connection in equality in terms of existence of gender-based violence. So it's really important to us to work with community people like yourselves to understand such issues a little bit more, perhaps. And, you know, we believe that it takes all of those things all together to make a difference. One of the ways that we do our work is really through kind of approaching the story of the person. So that's called kind of narrative healing, where we work with the person to find spaces where they see themselves as having choices in their life and where they see themselves as someone who is absolutely a hundred percent deserving of self-compassion and compassion of the world around them. And our services are, you know, like I said, women-centered, but they're focused on empowering, they're focused on being respectful, and they're focused on recognizing that everyone comes in through our door with a whole lot of a story in terms of the parts of who they are. And that's all part of the thing that we need to kind of attend to when they come to our service. And, you know, I think for yourselves, you may be thinking, well, what do I do? How do I know if this is happening? What are some things that I should kind of be looking out for? So all of you in your communities, I'm sure, have various relationships with lots of different people, including youths directly or indirectly. Some of the things that we often kind of think about when we're hearing a story is, you know, how old is the person that is involved with this person? Is there a big age difference or a difference in terms of that person having authority in their lives in some way? Those would be big things that would jump out for us. Kind of also look at kind of how does the relationship evolve? Is it a situation where this youth was all of a sudden receiving all these gifts and money and compliments and being boosted way, way up? And now all of a sudden, they're gone from up there to way down here? We're, you know, wondering and questioning about, like I said, the degree of control or influence that this other person has in their lives. And we're, you know, thinking, considering those things. And in situations with youths where it's at risk, then we're absolutely involving, you know, other partners in Picto County, like Child Protection Services. So in terms of understanding that a little bit more, I think it's really important to kind of understand what we refer to as first voice types of stories. You know, those stories belong to those individuals. And what I can say is that we have a library, a joint group of more library at our centre that has some really great literature within it, including literature that is from first voice experience. And I encourage any of you who are interested in borrowing any of those books. Some of them are short, simple reads that would take you, you know, an hour to two hours to read. There are some books that are more academic in nature that might take you weeks to flip your way through. But that's one sort of safe way for you to hear more of those first voice stories. And in terms of, you know, where has this rather quick presentation in terms of the gravity of the situation came from? My resources go back to our program, mapping a road to power and healing, the Women's Centre, as well as workshops that we've been a part of that have involved Stepping Stone, which is a service in Halifax, as well as the YMCA, who is the coordinator of the TESS program that we are a member of, and some other kinds of resources over time. There are way more services than what you might think when you think about this issue that are part of those kind of wraparound services, both throughout Canada and provincially. There is the Canadian Centre to End Human Trafficking National Hotline, which this will be emailed out to all of you. There is the Provincial Human Trafficking Team Tick Line, in which people can call the Mobile Health Crisis Team, the Child Protection Services, SecExStone, which is a service that has a provincial reach but is predominantly in Halifax. And Stay is a part of the TESS program. So it's actually a service that will help arrange all the state space for youths to stay, as well as they have some services that are for parents who have questions, you know. And their services are twenty-four hours a day. So it's a Monday to Friday night when you're wondering what you're going to do when you're in a situation. If you connect with the NST, they can help kind of connect you down that road. Our service is Monday to Friday, nine to four thirty. And we recognize that not everything happens within those hours. We have a partnership agreement with TRAMAN where whenever there's someone who might need to reach out to our service during off-hours, you can reach them through the crisis line. So that number is there as well. St. John's Sexual Assault Centre in Halifax. Family Services here in Picto County, they're not listed there. But there are also a resource, you know, Social Native Women's Association that's located in Sydney is specific to human trafficking and other issues, as well as the association of Latinx social workers. So those are some of the services and kind of what it is that we're talking about when we're talking with human trafficking or sexual exploitation and how it might impact on someone and how it happens to happen. So that's my presentation in a nutshell. I'm open to any questions. If you have any for me now or later, please feel free to let me know. I'd be happy to support it.
Thank you, Shelly, for the wonderful presentation. There's a lot of information and there's certainly a lot of good information that's going on and all the things that we should be able to learn regularly over in Canada. We'll open it up for questions. Eder?
I'm just wondering how close you've worked with the RCMP or the RCMP or the people that, you know, accounts to this sort of human trafficking?
So often, in my experience of that, where sexual violence work, people often don't choose to reach out to authorities. In a situation of youth, then that would be one in which people need to contact Child Protection Services. The RCMP would become involved, kind of, pretty bad. So from our end, there are less referrals going out, so often dealing with adults from the RCMP. And if they do refer to us when they have when they have some logic to say, you know, could benefit from our supports.
We had a, I had a, an incident, a lady following on preschool, that it was her daughter going to school down at the high school when her stop. She turned around and they wanted her to get in. And she runs through the snow and through the woods and, you know, a couple neighbors, she followed, right? But police didn't seem to take it as a... But police didn't seem to take it as an hostage, you know, it seemed a little overreactive. I just wondered, you know, how serious someone did, please say it.
Well, in my experience, kind of thinking from 30 years on, right? So 30 years ago, this was something we're talking about. When I started at the Women's Centre about six years ago, we were just starting to have those conversations. And now, as I mentioned, with four years of the problems having a task team set up to deal with those issues, we're beginning to really go and recognise as a society that this is a really crucial and important issue for us to pay attention to. And I think it's something that was there 30 years ago and there six years ago, we just didn't necessarily have the language or the understanding to have those conversations about. I think we often kind of mystified human trafficking and think about it as something that involved taking somebody's passport or just something that happened, you know, in another country, couldn't have happened in Canada, and sadly, we were wrong to do that.
Thank you. Jessica?
I, thank you for coming down this evening and the talk. The job I did, the kids in Boston, especially when I was at North New York, there was talk, there was talk around that kid, I don't know, this is really happened, right? You're watching some of these kids and, well, I'm just going to say, maybe watching some of these girls, okay, and they're by themselves, and then they're not at school anymore, and then they're back and, you know, completely different, they're in a different lifestyle altogether, hanging out. I guess, like you'd say, they're in with a different group that may not be the sort of, that's the group they're in with the first place, okay? And then you hear this, these stories about these white bands with Hindu, this kind of power packs, maybe kind of here and going for them, then going to the brush, and then going back and all. Okay, so that's the nightmare that I can't stand. How come they're not getting them at the border? I don't know how old these kids are and if they're doing something. It's too late when they get up there, something bad happens, maybe they never come back to Nova Scotia. But I think, no exposure, most of the kids are combatants. I think you lived in trauma or Edmonton, Montreal. A 14 and 16-year-old girl just disappears, and you've seen, we all see in these movies the way they were the Indian girls, I think. It's, it's terrible, right? It just scares you, and then it makes you think a little more and a little more. And you said, six years ago or 10 years ago, this is the girl in Austin, years and years. I just didn't want to know what happened. I think, and I might be totally wrong, I mean, there are all kinds of good people trying to do stuff, but you never look out. Now, I think if the mountains are in on it, or that past forest you're talking about, there should be another group or whatever, head of authority, that when they get to the border, if you see this, these bands with, oh, where's a band going, a lady driving or a man driving, the six girls, you know what I mean? And I may be totally wrong, it's probably unhelpful, but I heard those stories, and then they all seem to come back suddenly, ninety, or late evening, suddenly turn the loose and all our human release and then pick them up, but we didn't even see them. But anyway, is that, those stories are true, are they?
What you refer to, Chester, are questions and situations where obviously you felt very uncomfortable, and for good reason, I would suggest, because us often have our place at. And absolutely, we have an opportunity when someone is here in our community to surround them with services and with care. And as people move across Nova Scotia, out of Nova Scotia, those opportunities become less and less. In my circles, there's a symbol which looks like this, and that symbol is, it meant to be a fundamental way of flagging a bus driver, a crossing person, any, anyone who you come in traffic, in contact with, to symbolize that you are actually being trafficked and not safe. That's something that's been developed, but is still not extremely well-known yet. But that is a symbol that we try to get out to youths and to individuals so that they will know it. And I would call authorities in those situations if I was concerned.
So maybe sometime, there are a group here, the group controller, the group that, say, should act at school or, it would almost be a real good thing. I think you did a part of an in-service, like that talk that we just had here with teachers, and with the bus drivers, and you know how we have to go to an in-service?
Yes.
Something other than telling you how to drive a bus or something, or how to walk the door. And because I'm sure that Mary knows and Donny knows, and there's all kinds of people know, because they're opening the door and letting that kid on and off, okay? And when they go to big schools, say, it doesn't matter if it's down there, or we open the door and they go off, they never go off, well, 90% of them head to the village, but there's some always heading away somewhere else, maybe every day at the back of the taxi home or something. And there just needs to be time to look out for them somehow. I know it's definitely one for you, and the heat's down, but the problems get bigger and bigger, I don't know, because, I, but anyway, I'm thanking you for letting me do it, and I'm just hoping that maybe five years, the problem may be not so bad, or maybe so out of control, and that nobody would ever be able to stop it, but I'm hoping it'll be not so bad. Thank you.
I think the more we pay attention, the more likely it is that we can have it. So thank you for the work you do.
Thank you, Jessica. I have a question.
Thank you for sharing it with the presentation. Very informative. I don't have a handle on this, how big a problem are we dealing, how do you measure where we're at now? As you said, is it going to get a whole lot bigger or is it going to get it out of control? If we don't have a measure, I don't know if it's possible to measure, you know, I have heard people say, it is becoming a much bigger problem, they're affecting guys and it's sort of, that it's bad. But it's sort of like a whole lot of other problems, drugs and everything else, that kind of flies under the radar a lot of times. You can go from New York City, you're in Kentucky every day, and go to work and pay your bills and everything else, and not even know the problem. You know, it's you or your family, everybody ever heard of. It's not something that's talked about a lot, and it's also sometimes thinking, I think, is, well, that's something a little bad now. They said, they do a good job raising the kids, whoever, people out there in town. But I think you went to here, the spaces where it happens to kids that had every advantage or opportunity, but something was wrong somewhere. I don't know the pinpoint what it is, but I think it's really important to stress that part, that it's not all, you know, indigenous communities or all of this. There is a percentage that are going about, really good families, good backgrounds, and love, loved after, yeah, something goes wrong. How would we figure that out again, so that we could help those families, cut this individual boundary, so it's correct right there? Yeah, the other question I had is, we all have the picture, I think, of what Chester was mentioning, of white man coming in from outside, doing these things to our, I think, you mentioned there sometimes, a boyfriend, a girlfriend, they'll all be in the house, and, you know, four of those inside groups. How many of these situations are actually a lot more local than the outsider coming in? This is what we've always had, I remember when I was a child, the perception of outsiders coming in and taking, you know, women, girls, so, but how many of them are more on the ground, some of these, we're really hurt, like, so what, Chester, if I were to be, you know, some of that type of stuff? Those are some of the questions in my mind, that they're the measure, we can, how do we all improve, we don't know, you know, what it's like?
Well, I think to your point, Gordon Parker, it often looks worse before it looks better, because it's something that we weren't talking about. So now, as we start to talk about it, we hear more about it, so we become more aware. We certainly have a provincial shelter that's here, a youth-based service that is here for children aged 12 and up who are experiencing sexual exploitation. So that suggests the size of the problem for Nova Scotia. In my work experience, things have occurred much more at a local level, in terms of a Nova Scotia level, throughout the years. And at the Women's Centre, we kind of track the reason why people seek our services, and human trafficking, sexual exploitation is something that can sometimes be a factor. It's not a large number of people, but it is a number of people. And in the last, in the last year, that number has tripled. So whether or not that number has tripled because people are more comfortable in having the conversations, because we're all more comfortable in having the conversation, I don't necessarily see it as a bad thing, I see it as a really important thing for people to be able to be open and frank about situations that they find themselves in, so that we can support them more robustly.
What a problem with the group here, so in terms of the local people, the group because of this to happen, not the outsider coming in, but is that much of a percentage to be thinking of the, or what's going on, or is that just a small percentage? I heard of, this would be way back from the past, of, you know, actual families exploiting adult, you know, per problem. I don't have that app very often, but, you know, is that, is the local level, is that a pretty small part or a bigger part of the whole problem?
So I really can't comment on that statistic, because it's not one that I've researched. But I can say that in my experience, it is more often a local problem than a gang problem or a sort of, you know, something across the border from another province, it's more something that is occurring within Nova Scotia. And I think a lot of our sort of preconceived notions of, you know, the man coming from the side of our community in a way, helps us turn our head the other way and think that that's something that's out of our control. But, you know, all of us in our conversations with youths in particular, have an opportunity to, if we have a moment where something doesn't feel right, to then, you know, consider talking to bodies counselor who's involved in their life, plus, maybe not a parent, maybe their parent, kind of depending on that situation. And certainly, you know, on those individual levels, if you find yourself in situations where you're not sure about them and you want to have someone to talk it through, you know, I'll have my email, you have my phone number, feel free to reach out, I'd be happy to, to kind of talk through those individual situations if it's helpful.
Thanks, Howard. David?
Thank you, Debbie Warren Murray. My love, thank you, Doug LeCombe. I've sat here and just overwhelmed with the amount of information, so helplessness, utility, transformation, it's such a big hidden problem. Really, really difficult to know how to, even know what to spare. I have a couple of questions. These things. Have they started to decide, they?
Oh, I think absolutely. I think absolutely.
Yeah. I'm in paper, I've stated, or can't sign on any device, I'm going to do that first, to the no stack, and they can't go on, I'm going to say nasty things about the Prime Minister, great, they also don't connect to, and it's traceable, back to your eyes, that's you. That might be something we need to consider as a society, for all kinds of reasons, this has been one of them. The second question or second comment maybe is, I don't know, I don't think there's any solution, obviously.
No.
I don't know how you hold up every day carrying these burdens that other people bring to you, very, very difficult situations. I want to thank you for being an advocate for them. Is there something we can do around the justice system that always feel that perpetrators are, they're, they're all silently perpetuated, or boyfriends, or recently acquired boyfriends? Is there any meaningful consequence? But, you know, I'm more proud on the caption, very small, but so.
Well, I find that interesting, because I know six years ago, when I had the honour of beginning in this role with the Women's Centre as the Executive Director, I had conversations with local policing authorities, asking the question of interventions around these issues, because I knew there were issues that existed. And at that time, if you think about what we see in the newspaper and things, there really weren't any charges coming forward. In the last three to four years here in Pictor County, there have been a number of charges that have rolled forward. And, you know, in Canada in general, we follow a system in terms of prostitution, where prostituting isn't illegal, but living off the avails of a prostitute or trafficking someone is criminal. So, you know, that's important to kind of keep in mind, but one of the things that we haven't done a lot of as a country, or as a province, or as a local municipality, we haven't thought about how we kind of try to interrupt that by thinking about the social conditions that promote asking for such activities and services to exist in our world. So at a very social level, I think there's lots that we can do to encourage and promote real, informed consent and consensus in one's lives and the expectation that people will be viewed as something more than a sexual object to be trafficked in. So I do think there are things that we can do, and they're big things, right? So I am talking big, in my mind, when I'm talking about recreation circles, because recreation offers a sense of community, a circle of care, people that you can turn to, that you can be part of, where you belong, and it makes a difference. It makes a difference in people's lives. So the more that we can promote places of inclusion and safety, I think whether intentionally or not, we're doing something to help affect a very large problem, especially if it's something that can be accessible to anyone.
Thank you. Thanks, Dave. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, the two questions that I was, I was going to ask at the end, I'll ask it long.
David?
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, John, for mentioning this, very informative. Just, I'm wondering, more often, and especially in Facebook and police departments, it's the ultimate, showing the woman is a victim. They go for a day, you know, years, and then all of a sudden, they go up the state, they can tell, oh, it's been a minute, we've had a problem, best to, where that John has such thing, or pretty often with John, they have to save the, except for, like you mentioned, to be started trafficking.
So not as a justice official, not in the inside scoop of what happened there, but I do know, as I've said, that there is a team that's been formed. So I would think that if they are seeing links to human trafficking, that that would be part of the conversation, that they would be having justice-wise, I wouldn't be surprised. David?
Thank you, David. Thurlow?
Thank you, Debbie Warren. Thank you so much for coming tonight. I've been waiting for you to come for a very long time, and something that I asked you to put on each other, probably a year ago or so, so thank you for tonight, it's been very lucky. This is something that I kind of knew about, and then during the pandemic, I settled across a few news articles. a few news articles, and I did a deep article on dieting. It was pretty disturbing. And it was very bugging and disgusting and scary. And they say that there's no community able to properly attach that. Do you feel that's true?
Absolutely.
And I think something that we often think about is that this is just for young women, also on the board, lots of little boys as well.
Absolutely.
And this is something that I began talking about with my friends, and I'll share it on Facebook. I know the young kids, the cool kids aren't on Facebook anymore, I think that, but their parents are. And, you know, it, it seems that a lot of people know, know this. And the stories that I read, that I feel very connected to, is that there are people like me that know about it and understand. And they see the situation, and they don't talk for that. And, you know, and then a little while later, you know, they hear that that girl was rescued, or that situation happened. But I have stories in the paper that Chronicle Herald or Saltwater, Saltwater, I don't know, they did an exposé, kind of talking about different stories throughout the process of women that have been human trafficked, and different stories. Story that really got me too was the story from a young girl, she was student at State of Ash, which we've heard this, where she went to Montreal, her unique, with her girlfriends, she's born, and she was, all the girls could be caper about that she, you know, strays, do, you know, have other opportunities, all that we can care for. And she was, I think as, as a young girl, I know that, your condition from a young age, I know I was, to watch your drink, watch who you talk to, your body language, and she did everything right. And they still spoke something in her journal. And she was taken, and she was, I think we found eight different girlfriends in her locker drawer, and she was raped multiple times. And a friend ended up finding her at home, it's, it's, no, they didn't know, she wasn't with them long enough, shut down, and she came home, luckily, to her mom, and that, that's a damaging experience that changed her. And I can't help but think that, how many other stories of this has happened in our county that we don't know about? How many kids are forever changed because of this? And these are our children, and these are our future. And so I guess from that, I have many conversations, remember, from my head record, to my friends and family about this situation. And it's pretty scary. And, you know, the stories that I hear, as much as they start talking about it, they'll start telling me what they're hearing. And it is happening in our communities. There's young boys and young, and young girls that are, are, some are involved in the very early beginning stages of this, where they're trading sex for drugs, or hanging out with the wrong crowd, that's clearly pushing the limits into these sort of things. And I feel that from the conversations that I've had, that parents feel very helpless because nothing really has happened yet. But they see the road that this is going down, and they want to protect their children. And the, the stories that I've heard, is that the parents are very frustrated because the police get charged with anything else. And they feel helpless. What do we say to those parents? Like what, what do we do with your young sons and daughters where we see this happening, that they're not?
I would a hundred percent encourage them to give the end stay program a call. In terms of parental involvement in that program, their child does not have to be involved in the program for parents to receive some support. And they have the capacity to have more wraparound service and 24-hour care than, than what we have at, at kind of a local level that's specific to that. And, and to your point, I want to thank you for being forward-thinking and realizing that these are conversations that, that we need to have. It's my hope in having this conversation with all of you, that you will even have a conversation with someone else, and in that, help de-mystify it a little bit, so that survivors and parents can know that you're a safe person to talk to. You know, it doesn't mean that you have to be a social worker, you need to have the answers, but treating someone as a human being with kindness and compassion and care is a really important first step to getting them to the right place. And, and you will all receive this presentation with the list of phone numbers that you can have them at your fingertips, that can help with making those, those referrals kind of forward to help connect them with some, some really important resources.
I just want to request a little bit of things to share. Do you think there's more about that, there's a lot to do with why we want special hiring? Because I know if you're about the girlfriend process, and then after to Montreal, and wherever they go from that, Vancouver, Toronto, wherever. But do you think the port, they're also being exploited internationally as well? Is that?
I'm sure that that occurs. It's outside of my experience in terms of providing service here in Pictet County. Most of what, what is occurring is, is most often been at a more local level. But absolutely, things happen internationally as well. But I think that's part of how, how it gets a little bit mystified, because we begin to think about the things that happen as things are organized, and absolutely, or organized, sexual exploitation happens. It happens internationally, it happens, you know, impacting Canada in many different ways. But it also, at a more local level, happens in a, in a more simple, less complex way.
My last question is, going on with my thoughts of back to Sarah, about cell phones. And what I said before, that kids are on Facebook, or on Snapchat, Instagram, and I think body image is maybe a huge, a huge, a huge, the way that a personal security sees themselves in their image. And I think, you know, there's a kind of a word for patient of, I would say, girls, maybe who was a little older than they are. And, you know, I guess what advice would you have for parents that maybe are in a situation and need to have this conversation with their kids? Like where do you, it's all connected, right? Like we're a society, I think, has changed very drastically, the social media, and it's changing rapidly all the time, and what is acceptable, and, you know, what I, you know, you always say, like, what I look like at 15 is not what you're sitting here on, like, anymore, right? Like it's very, it's very different, right? It's a different topic, a different culture all day. What do you, what do you say to parents that need to come to the beginnings of this conversation? Where do they start?
Well, I think that just like with drugs and alcohol, we need to start those conversations when children are in elementary school. Conversation about their, their right to say yes and no, and the, the safety of their bodies, and, and their right and responsibility to take care, take care of themselves. In terms of how we kind of go about that, the Women's Centre offers girls camps, four days, early days and all over nights, usually one during March break, we offer one in Picto, one in Pictet Landing, and, and one out of the board white space in Glasgow. And those are for girls aged nine to 12, and we're, we're starting talking about their targets and preventative things. And this program that we offer within the schools, called Finding Need, that is offered, the counter part of that is offered to boys at the same time, called Changing Male Conversations. So newly at Women's Centre are going into the schools, we've been doing it for the last three years now, offering an opportunity as an evening program to have these conversations with youth at age grade seven onward. So those are really important preventative things. And I, I think that from a parent perspective, knowing what to look for, right? Knowing, oh, this feels bad, and all of a sudden these things are happening. It may be bad. If you have reason to be concerned, there's reason to question, and there are resources that are out there for you to reach out and have some conversations, the kind of naked, individual plan, depends on how you proceed. It's complicated.
Back on the day camps, for those girls, for the girls who are vulnerable, I know, personally, some went through the cannon, she had last year, I completely love that kid. So thank you for being there. And I just want to say, thank you for, like, this topic deserves to be from her age, and hopefully the chance to go back to it.
Thank you, Mary. Jessica's another question. It's been told to start, anybody who has a question, anything to speak, don't want to go ahead, but I think, thank you, Debbie Gordon. Thank you, Charlotte, for coming tonight. A lot of stuff here today, a lot of information, tired grass, right? You don't really, myself personally, I never really see this, right? So it's, the story of the one who said that, I can relate to that stuff. But there's, there's good ones, some of them, one, like, if you see emails, emails sometimes are missed, right? And it makes you wonder, you know, we're like, you can traffic, I said that, and gone for a week or seven days, and picked up, and then back, and this thing. I just wonder, those kids, for some reason, they end up there, right? Do they know a program at those, those places to say, listen, here's, you're here, these are things to be aware of? These things could happen. You know, those, those places, those youths.
So we have had an opportunity to do some work with them at the Youth Centre, and, and I think those are really great questions, and to have an invitation that we want to express to them, so that they can better speak to that themselves.
Yeah. No, it's just, because you do hear, especially the one, you see that people miss all time, etc. And a lot of those girls, they go to North Nola, the boys, they go to North Nola and visit back, and, you know, things like this could happen. It'd be interesting to see if they, they do explain the risks under those.
I would think that that's part of, part of the experience of being there. And, and it's a journey, right? Healing from anything from that gives it a journey. And it's not often a straight line. There's often twist.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. I guess just on, on the whole, what can we give this council? And then, from my experiences before, because I've got a lot of, my, my, on the community of the process, the most stuff with me that, always treat those kids extra special, for an hour and a half, because it might be the only positive hour they have that whole week there. I don't know if they're going to go home. Now, I know, I know, we're talking about the pre-teens and all that stuff. There's a lot of kids going home, they have people staying. Parents are often working, seeing kids. How, how much does that have a factor? Do not get me to mention that. Is that common?
That is not often, particularly when we're luring into this situation. It's often the image that we have in our mind that somehow, from a parental level, that people have, have let down their child. I think that we as a society have, have let each other down when it comes to sexual exploitation in terms of continuing to have the condition in which we normalize buying or selling a person for sexual purposes. So that's my, that's my humble opinion. I think in terms of empty homes, we've come a long way. There's all kinds of after-school programs that are in play now for, for youths that are critical to, to their wellbeing, and to the wellbeing of the family, to, to need to have up here. So there's always more we can do. And, and parents need to, you know, understand that the world that we're in now may not be the world that they grew up in, right? We live in a world with, with cell phones, and I, I think about my own upbringing, and I escaped every summer out to, you know, the middle of nowhere, where there were no phones in sight. And, you know, I was on a farm, growing vegetables, and stalking around, and having a great old time, and could disconnect. And, and now our youth can never get away from, from whatever it is that's right in front of them because of cell phones. So as much good as comes with them, there's also risks. And I think parents need to have an opportunity and a space to be able to have conversations about, about that.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thanks for being here. It was very interesting, a lot of information. I think social media today has caused a lot of bullying. And I think the amount of bullying that goes on pulls some steam of female or male in the wrong direction. And with that happening, I think that where, where the doors don't get opened at home, there's no soccer at the table, things are waiting, they're thinking, you know, we're in class, and to my household where it plays a big role in that too. And the only advice I could give a parent, that I was, and I kept going over my mom, is always keep the door open for conversation. Doesn't matter the topic, always keep the door open. Doesn't matter if it's good or bad, or if you feel you shouldn't even tell, be honest with that.
Absolutely. Thanks, Barry.
Well, sorry. Yes, sir. I remember, Andy said, okay, keep those kids right. That's something we were told year after year after year. Say hi, if only you had to, when they're getting on the bus, you get it now, you say hi to them in the morning, you say bye to them. Let me tell you, when they put me in the back, so if some job, you get those kids to stay in back here, I revive. But they're doing now. I'm not opening the door, but anyway, they came a long way, just being nice to kids, right? And they know that, and they see it tomorrow or see it somewhere, and that's important. But that's another topic. But what I'd like to see happen in the spring newsletter, you, you make up something that we can air and give it to Suzanne, put in our newsletter, and, and talk about, about the parent groups that they ever see a problem, that they can, our copy, actually, to go to summer, and, and your sign, talk about that or something that, once people start to see something, or that they got, we got to be educated to know what to look for. And I think that we have a half a page in that, and make up something worth like you gave us tonight. Not a terrific amount of information, but just some high points and the important ones to, to ever put in your, our newsletter. Is that all right?
Thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you. Hey, Thurlow?
I forgot to add a question that I put, Debbie Gordon. I guess, something I wanted to say too, was in charge of the, you know, if something's wrong, it probably is. So let's see, go. But, you often hear about, or drug use here in Pictet County, especially since the pandemic has kind of exploded. What is that trying to, to be trapped, or what's the literature, in the work?
It's often a fact. It's often a variable within the experience, and certainly drugs in Pictet County, at the legal faucet, is a serious concern.
Yeah, I was just wondering if that kind of plays into a role of, I don't know if there's any metrics to judge that or anything, but it just seems that it's something that we're mobilizing to be able to rise to, or is it something that kind of goes hand in hand, but partly, but not really?
It certainly seems to be a variable, both in the experience of becoming traumatized and the experience of coping with trauma, right? We can look at addiction and drug We can look at addiction and drug use, in particular in women, often the precursor for that has been trauma, and it's something that they're trying to self prescribe or to treat.
Something I noticed too, what is, you started to hear a lot of stories that you said, the first, what would you find on the social media? First, first boy stories?
First boy stories.
Yes. You see a lot of those things shared now on social media, especially TikTok and stuff. So I feel like a lot of people are determined to, they want to hear those stories, and they just, they're trying to put themselves in that shape, emotions, and often there is, as Bobby wrote, after they've been out of state or whatever, storms, it's usually horrific. They usually have drug use problems, relapse issues, where we try to get cool, and sometimes go into another piece of relationship. So I just think, you know, we as a community, we really have to take care of each other and start looking for those signs and being, here all the time, I think that it takes a village race trial, and it really does, you know?
Yeah. Well, it takes all of you and all of us to build a positive community. You know, you know, small, small things like recreation, big things like addressing the housing crises that we're in in Picto County, those are all parts of the variables, looking at poison with food and values, and those are all important parts of the equation. And it it takes all of those things coming together, I think, to create a safe space for people to be comfortable coming in, returning to to anyone around the table or anyone in any service. It's not, it's not easy. Certainly appreciate the opportunity to share a little bit this weekend. Thank you.
Erin, would you be, come on, I'll hear a little bit of the last question.
Yeah. But just that I also would like to know if, like, the lucky we have, the kind of ones that were set for the folks, and it's just other ones in different towns, like.
There is. There's none of us from across Nova Scotia. All of us are rural, and and from those rural spaces where I can say with confidence this is something that happens straight across Nova Scotia because it's not, it's not news, it's only Picto County news, it's just news that we hear about when we talk about issues that are affecting our views and then predominantly in all of those conversations.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much for.
Thank you.
Share the night, certainly form the love, and thank you for us, this all on, and the tax council, the values of drug with the home, and it's a top of the job, we get out of government. Erin?
Thank you, Meredith.
You both, Margaret? Erin, I have to go.